Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's committee, excuse me, City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting. Welcome to City Council Chamber. The meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno.
Mr. Bruno is traveling to New Orleans. Something about witness relocation.
Burkhardt.
Here.
Ruby.
Here.
Cavan.
Here.
Kilburg.
Here.
Kosarag.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
We begin our City Council meetings, folks, with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask someone I had not yet cleared with to ask, but Ms. Humphries, will you kindly lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(laughter) I didn't ask. I would have. (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Folks, before we dive into business for tonight's council meeting, I would like to begin the meeting with a moment of reflection and a moment of silence to honor our friend and colleague, Mr. Ron Singer, who passed away, boy, was last week, correct? The 10th? Yeah, it's been sadly a while. As we all know, Mr. Singer served in the council for 20 years. He served his community as a teacher, as a council member, and of course, he served his country as well. To his wife Marilyn, to his kids, his grandkids, and all those who loved him, all those who liked him, all those who hung out with him, we express our sincerest condolences. All of you are well aware that the celebration of Mr. Singer's life is on Sunday, the 27th, at Malone Funeral Home. So before then, we just send our warmest thoughts to Marilyn and the kids and grandkids. So you can just bow our heads for just a moment. Thank you. And to Alderman Kilburg, beautiful comments in the paper. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk on the council agenda are considered to be routine, and they can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there a motion? Mr. Swanson makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Marx makes the second. Any questions, any comments? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, take the roll call.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kosarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been approved with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Let's see, we jump to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk, who recently had a birthday, to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills are $1,661,338.55, which is the same number of minutes I've been alive.
Is that right? That's amazing. Congratulations. Is there a motion to approve the bills as presented? I want to hear somebody repeat what Alderman Bruno normally does.
Mr. Mayor, can, I'll make a motion that we pay the bills as presented. The exact items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet and on the City of Geneva's website.
Ms. Burkhardt makes that motion with ease and confidence. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kosarag. Any questions, any comments? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, please take the roll.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kosarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
The bills have been approved with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. The Committee of the Whole items of business are all, or were all, on the consent agenda, so we jump to item 12. 12A is to consider ordinance number 2022-11, amending Title IV, Business and License Regulations, Chapter 2, Liquor Control, Section 4-2-13, License Fees and Number of the Geneva City Code, adding one Class C3 liquor license for The Nosh Company, LLC, located at 22 North Third Street. Is there a motion? Ms. Mayor makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kosarag. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Dixon did text me over the weekend that he will be out of town this evening. That is why he is not here. Mr. Dixon being, of course, the owner of Nosh. Any questions, any comments? Ms. Dawkins, all yours.
So the applicant would like to add the ability to offer alcoholic liquors for consumption off premises, and therefore, he needs to upgrade the license to the C3 taverns in certain restaurants effective with license renewal date of May 1.
All that, huh?
All that.
Ms. Mayor.
Where do they want to have a liquor license off premises?
It would allow them to sell packaged liquor to take off premises. They wouldn't actually be...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
In Batavia. No disrespect, of course, to our guests from Batavia. Anyone else? Questions from Ms. Dawkins? We have a motion by Mayor, a second by Kosarag. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kosarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12A has been approved. 12B, consider ordinance number 2022-12, amending Title IV, Business and License Regulations, Chapter 2, Liquor Control, Section 4-2-13, License Fees and Number of the Geneva City Code, adding one Class C4 liquor license for Up North Wine Tasting at 9 North 2nd Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Marx.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so Up North Wine Tasting LLC is a new business scheduled to open later this spring. They're requesting a Class C4 license that would authorize the sale of wine and beer for consumption on or off premise. Upon approval, the license would be issued upon occupancy. And I do believe we have Kathy Humphries here. I'm sorry, Anne. Mayor. So if you both want to come up, if there's other questions, or talk a little bit about your business?
Didn't Mr. Marx tell you this might happen?
(laughter)
Unprepared is best.
And just if you'll again state your name for the record.
Oh, okay. Kathy Humphries.
And Mary Humphries.
Mary Humphries. And my daughter, Amy Getkin, isn't able to be here. She has 22-month-old twins that she has to care for, although she would love to be here. Now, this vision came to us, we've been traveling to northern Michigan for 20 some-odd years, and we've grown to love what they offer in wine, in the Traverse City, Lethalna Mission Peninsula area. And my mind is always thinking, I'm never one that sits still, and one day, a thought came to me, because both my daughter and daughter-in-law were thinking of changing careers, and it came to me is, why can't we open a tasting room that would feature just northern Michigan wines? Because they're so sought after. They're all, 45th Parallel is where they're made, and they're all nationally recognized. We thought, what a great opportunity to bring part of northern Michigan here. And so we partnered with, so far, we have nine different wineries from that area that were thrilled to have us carry their wines. So we're going to offer and educate our patrons on both the vineyards. We're going to feature a different winery each month, so we can educate them on their varietals that they have, their history of their winery, where they're located, even offer promotional items for them to go travel to Traverse City, and those wineries will offer them maybe a free tasting, or something off their bottle. And then in turn, these wineries would like to be able to come in and maybe have an event with their wine club members, because they have many club members throughout this area. And they said, we'd love to do an event where we invite all of our club members to come to Geneva, which we thought, great, let them, if they're from the city, or from North Shore, or wherever they're from, let them come to Geneva and experience Geneva, and be able to buy the northern Michigan wines right here. So we're going to be featuring all these different wineries, offering flights, glasses, take-home bottles, and Shorts Beer is a big brewery up there, so we thought, northern Michigan beer, so we're going to be carrying three of their flagship beers for the non-wine drinkers, and then Northwood sodas for the kids, which is a Michigan-based product. So we'll offer soda from northern Michigan, and, you know, Great Lakes chips, which you can get at Jewel now, but they're all made in Traverse City. So we want to just try to make it feel like you're up in northern Michigan. So we're very excited, and we've been working tirelessly to just get done, and we're hoping April, if we can get things put together. If not, May, but yeah. So, any questions?
Any questions at all? Who knew that the 45th Parallel was where...
All these are. Yep.
You know, Craig Alderman Maladra drinks wine from the 38th pill.
Well, we've been surprised at how many people from this area have told us they're either from that area, have vacation homes up in that area. It's phenomenal. We're like, wow, yeah. No, the wineries we're bringing in, so...
And you're both Sommiers, as they call it, or...
Not yet.
I would like to pretend to be.
Yeah.
Wine 101, a podcast, tells me I am, so...
That's good enough.
Yeah. So, yeah.
It's very exciting, yeah, very exciting.
That's our thing.
It's wonderful. Any comments, any questions from the council? Floor is yours. Ms. Burkhardt.
No, I just want to say, enthusiasm is any sign for your business success. I think you have hit on something great. I just, it's so fun to see you both up here so excited about it, and you have a great focus. I mean, it's like, in one or two sentences, people know exactly what they're going to get, so yeah, welcome to Geneva. We're excited to...
And I've lived here, raised my kids here, so we've lived here since 93.
Wow, great.
So, we love Geneva. I would never, never leave.
Ah, good, except for to go up to northern...
Except for northern Michigan. But even everybody says, you're going to retire up there. I'm like, no, I would never. I could never leave this area.
Awesome.
When you can walk to downtown from your home, it's, you can't beat it.
Awesome.
You live in milk cream.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No samples this evening?
No.
They don't have any licenses.
We don't have our licenses.
Exactly.
Sorry, Mr. City Attorney.
They're like, I knew something was missing.
Well, my suspicion is this will be a close vote. So, Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir. Oh, forgive me, Mr. Kilburg.
Just, what's your time?
Microphone, Dean?
What's your timeframe, as far as...
Well, we have, we have just a bathroom to get built out by the landlord and our bar, but we have all our equipment, we have everything ordered, ready to go. So as soon as we get that done, that's why we just have to get through and, you know, get them to finish building stuff, get our inspections, and we have everything ready. That's why...
So you'll be open for all the festivals this summer?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, good.
And our hours in the beginning are going to be Thursday through Sunday, you know, like noon, or 1 to 8, 9. We don't want to have the late-nighter, be the bar type thing. We want to be more upscale like that. And we all have families to get home to, too, so... And then for festivals, we will carry it on, or maybe on like a Monday night, do like a book club night, if women want to come in and do a book club, or, you know...
Yeah, we do plan on hosting events on the nights that we're closed, and do something a little bit more private, a little bit more intimate.
Sure. Well, good luck to you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Clerk, your best reesling.
Kilburg, aye.
Kosarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12B has been approved. Congratulations and thank you very much. Item, whoops, item 12C, folks, consider ordinance number 2022-13, amending Section 11-14-5A, Section C, of the Title 1, oh, excuse me, Title 11, zoning ordinance to add a sixth type of authorized sign variation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Burkhardt makes the motion. Mr. Marx makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
So items C and D are related, so if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I'll present one summary.
Of course.
The property owners of 501 West State Street desire to erect a sign upon a building that is not permitted within the code and is not one of the five allowable sign variations to be considered under the Geneva zoning ordinance. The two-story building is a multi-tenant commercial building with multiple professional offices. The desired sign is to be located upon the straight seat, straight seat, street, state, street plus...
We had no samples earlier.
(laughter) Maybe I need some, of the building. However, the tenant in question does not have street frontage. Therefore, the first item for council's consideration is a text amendment, adding language for the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council to be able to consider their request as a sixth type of sign variation. God, Susie sells seashells by the seashore. The second item, item D on the agenda, is a request from the applicant for this variation, should the text amendment pass. There is more detailed information in the packet, and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the zoning ordinance text amendment and the requested sign variation. With us this evening, we have both the applicant, I believe, Cole Calamos?
Calamos.
Calamos.
Yeah.
And Director DeGroot, if you have any additional questions.
Mr. Calamos, do you wish to speak to this issue at all? It's up to you, sir.
Yeah, I can if you would like.
Join us at the podium, please. Calamos is a very well-known name. Any relation to the Calamos family?
Yeah, Nick's my father, and John is my great uncle.
Life is good.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yes, so, yeah, so basically, I'm actually part ownership, also work for NKFO, which owns CFOB, which owns 501 West State Street. We have a new tenant, Soraya, who's a CPA. Her and her friend are both certified public accountants, and they requested a sign to be put on the facade of the building and on State Street. Basically, we didn't know that, because they don't touch the exterior wall, that she can't get a sign. Well, there's like four spots available up on the wall, and only two of them are currently being used, so decided that we'd try to pursue it a little bit further for them, so that we can try to help advertise, since we actually own two suites in the building ourselves. So we were like, well, we have no want or need to put our sign up on the wall, because one of them's a family office that we like to keep our privacy and would not like to advertise we're in the building, and then the other one's a foundation that gives to Fox Valley charities. So again, it's a private foundation, doesn't really receive anything, that would be zero benefit to add any signage, so we decided, all right, like, is there any way we could, like, help get this? So David and Chayton and their entire team were very helpful with just getting us through this whole process and setting up this text amendment, and yeah, I actually wasn't even able to present last time, because my wife is 38 weeks pregnant, so we had a little labor scare a couple of weeks ago. So literally, I was getting in the car, and she's like, I need to go to the hospital. So we like rushed to the hospital real quick, and like called Chayton, and he's like, I got this, like, I'll present. I was like, thank you, so...
So we can take our time deliberating tonight?
Yeah, you know.
Wow. Are you wearing a pager, or you got your phone on, or...
Yeah, my hands in my pocket to check for the vibration.
I do sound old, don't I? Isn't that terrible? Sorry about that. Sorry about, okay. I'll explain that one in new business. I was on a pager. Questions for Mr. Calamos, soon to be a dad for the first time?
Yeah, yep.
Very exciting.
That's correct.
Very exciting. Yes, Ms. Burkhardt.
No questions for you, but I appreciate you being here tonight and kind of explaining the situation. Were you surprised when you realized that you couldn't give any kind of space to this new tenant?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, I actually started in, I'm a real estate analyst, and I started doing this nine months ago, so I'm surprised pretty much every week with everything, so...
We're glad we could be part of your education.
Yeah, exactly.
I might have a question for David, if...
Certainly. Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you. So the Plan Commission was unanimous, right, in recommending this?
Right.
Has this come before? I'm kind of surprised this hasn't come before us before, or has it?
It hasn't come up often, maybe once or twice, there's been a tenant that doesn't have frontage that's desired sign, but I guess not enough to pursue the text amendment that would be required to have it considered as a variation. So I, no, I don't think it's come up very often.
Okay. That seems like a good solution, a good cleanup work, maybe, so, all right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else from the dais? Questions for either, or comments for Mr. Calamos or Mr. DeGroot? Mr. Clerk, we have a motion, and we have a second on item 12C. If you would be so kind as to take the roll.
Kosarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kosarag.
Aye.
Ditto. With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 12D has been approved. Please thank your clients for their interest in pursuit, and early congratulations to you and your wife. That's exciting.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, where's the baby going to be born?
Well, it's kind of up in the air, but we actually end up CDH, because that's where we, there's a private practice doctor that we see currently. That's who her OB was, and...
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Wow. Well, that's cool. We can have a ribbon-cutting and a celebration at the same time.
Exactly.
Yeah, what the heck. Before we adjourn to closed session, should we just jump into new business and public comment? Anyone object to that? Anyone in the audience, any new business they want to share, any questions they want to ask? Anyone online? No? From the dais? With that, ladies and gentlemen, item 13 is to adjourn to closed session on the review of closed session minutes pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 12/2.06 subsection C. Is there a motion accordingly?
Second.
Ms. Mayor makes the motion. Mr. Marx makes the second. Let's do a roll call vote.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kosarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
We are going to head into closed session. We kindly ask that those who are not participating in the closed session to depart the room.
And then for those...
And then for those, there's nobody yet, so you don't have to worry about that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Microphones are off. Ladies and gentlemen, I entertain a motion to return to open session.
The broadcast is now starting.
All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Mr. Marx makes the motion to return to open session. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Cavan. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of returning to open session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are back in open session. Ladies and gentlemen, I will yield the floor to the distinguished council member from the second ward, Mr. Kosarag.
I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council closed session minutes, approved for release on March 21st, 2022. First, the remaining minutes from January 22nd, 2013. Second, the remaining minutes from March 4th, 2013. Third, the full minutes from April 22nd, 2013. Four, the remaining minutes from August 5th, 2013. Fifth, the remaining minutes from December 2nd, 2013. Six, the remaining minutes from July 10th, 2017. Seventh, the partial minutes from February 12th, 2018. Eighth, the full minutes from August 26th, 2019. Ninth, the full minutes of January 19th, 2021. And tenth, and lastly, the partial minutes from September 7th, 2021.
There's a motion offered by Mr. Kosarag. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maladra. Any questions or any comments regarding the motion? That's on the floor. Mr. Clerk, when you have a moment, sir, please take the roll on the motion presented.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kosarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kosarag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The motion's approved with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We dispatched earlier new business and public comment, but if anybody from the dais has any new business or comments they'd like to make, give it a shot. A motion to adjourn the council meeting would be in order. Mr. Marx makes that motion. All in favor of adjourned the council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We will take just one moment to transition to the Committee of the Whole, where Ms. Burkhardt will be chairing.
Uh, tonight is Monday, March 21st, 2022. This is the Committee of the Whole meeting. I'm Tara Burkhardt. I represent, uh, the Historic First Ward, along with Alderman Mike Bruno. Uh, everyone is actually here tonight, except for Alderman Bruno. Uh, first item of business is recommend suspending the rules to permit Alderman Burkhardt to chair this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda.
So moved.
I'm in.
Second.
Uh, Alderman Swanson, and then a second by Alderman Kossarog. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Um, item three, approve committee of the whole minutes from March 7th, 2022. Do you have a motion? Alderman Mayor, and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Marx. Uh, any comment or any questions about the, uh, committee of the whole minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Passes unanimously. Items of business 4A, consider draft ordinance amending Title II Public Safety Departments, Chapter I Police Department of the Geneva City Code. Uh, could I have a motion, please? Alderman Marx, the motion? Second, Alderman Maladra. And will we hear from our city administrator?
Yes.
So the Illinois Municipal Code provides that a non-home rule municipality by ordinance may provide for a position of deputy chief to be appointed by the chief of the police department. As part of the ongoing effort to implement professional human resources practices in the city, the recommendation for your consideration this evening is to reclassify the position of police commander to deputy police chief and bring the position in line with comparable communities. The reclassification will not change the employee's placement on the classification and compensation plan and will not incur any additional expense. Under the current structure, the position of police commander falls under the purview of the Board of Fire and Police Commission, who are in full support of the proposed reclassification to deputy chief with appointment made by the chief of police. The ordinance for the city council's consideration effectuates this recommended change and amends additional language in this title of the city code that is either covered by statute or the collective bargaining agreement. Uh, with us this evening, we do have Chief Passarelli, and if you have any additional questions, um, either Chief, or myself, or Ben would be happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Kilburg?
Uh, Chief, uh, as far as chain of command, does this give some clarity to it? For instance, if you're on vacation, or is there anything that, uh, uh, changes as far as, uh, who, who's in charge?
Yeah, no, not really. What we do is, when I'm not around, one of the commanders currently is on call, so that won't change. They'll just have the deputy chief title, so whoever that on-call command is at the time is responsible for running things while I'm not available.
But if there was some type of a crisis, would the deputy police chief then step in and take command?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Over the, over another commander?
Well, the commander won't be there anymore.
Okay.
So they'll both be deputy chiefs. So the two current commanders will be reclassified as deputy police chiefs. So as an example of commander.
Okay, so they're both, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Comments? Anything from the public online?
No one joining us online.
Uh, is the voice vote okay on this?
It is.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks to you.
Thank you.
Going on to 4B, consider draft resolution authorizing annual purchase of distribution of transformers and material through Wesco's Sourcewell Contract 12128 WES as presented. Um, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Swanson?
Second.
Alderman Mayor with a second.
Well, we knew you were here, but thanks. Uh, so electrical equipment and transformers are available through the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative that competitively bids procurement contracts for government and not nonprofit entities. Uh, the transformers available from Wesco meet the City of Geneva specifications and Department of Energy Efficiency Standards. And as we all heard, Superintendent Holton is with us this evening, if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Kossarog?
Just a simple question, uh, there's no problem or anything, but how did the pricing compare through this cooperating purcha, um, purchasing cooperative versus what we paid in past years?
Um, that's, uh, kind of a hard question to answer because of all the volatility right now. Um, we do have, uh, price escalation in our, the current, uh, blanket purchase order, and really what we're being told is nobody will set the price of a transformer until we order it. So, uh, going off the Sourcewell, we know that we're getting their lowest possible bid, just like we would do with ours, but the actual, uh, you know, line item to line item comparison's difficult, uh, difficult to perform right now.
Just to clarify, I didn't mean from this year's, uh, request for proposal, I meant from previous year. So like a transformer per unit, I, I'm not looking for specific examples or anything, but do you have any idea, was it up significantly from 2020, 2019?
Uh, yeah, uh, transformers are up almost two times, plus the lead times. Several manufacturers aren't even taking orders right now.
Yeah.
Um, some are taking orders, but they're three-plus years out. We have one manufacturer who's through Wesco, um, and its, uh, start of construction is 52 weeks after order and delivery 10 weeks after that.
Wow. So. Great. And these ones from Wesco are needed when we need them?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah, what do, what do they attribute the escalation in price to?
Uh, material shortages, so copper, steel, the stuff that goes into transformers, there's just, there's just a shortage of it.
Uh, they're produced domestically, then?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, 4C, consider draft resolution authorizing a contract with Stewart Spreading for the disposal of biosolids by land application in an amount not to exceed $22.47 per cubic yard.
So moved.
Alderman Mayor with the motion?
Second.
Alderman Kossarog with the second.
Okay, so the wastewater plant produces roughly 2,800 cubic yards of biosolids annually. Land application to farm fields is the most economical way to dispose of the material. Two bids were received, with Stewart Spreading submitting the low bid. The City of Geneva has been using Stewart Spreading since 2011, and staff has been satisfied with their work. We do have, as you all know, Superintendent Van Gescam with us this evening, if you have any additional questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Kilburg?
Um, just, a, a question as it relates to liability. You're transporting it from our site to some farm fields, probably west of Geneva here somewhere. When does the liability considerations as it relates to that waste come into play?
As far as the?
In other words, once it leaves our site, is it really, the, the legal, legal responsibility rests with, uh, this company?
No, actually, um, the, the handling of it itself is, is all taken care of by Stewart Spreading.
Right.
Uh, you know, they haul it outs, you know, to their trucks and, and dispose of it. Uh, the biosolids themselves, the city retains ownership of that biosolids that goes onto the farm fields.
So if there was an accident and there was a spill, I mean, what's the legal exposure for the city if something like that would happen?
Uh, it would just generally be cleanup. There wouldn't be, um, anything major.
Okay.
There, there's nothing toxic or anything.
There's no consideration as it relates to hazardous material?
There's really nothing hazardous, uh, with it. It is just, it, it would just, it's all organic. I mean, there, there is the, the radium that we have from, uh, from the, the water itself, but.
I mean, if it would get into a ro, waterway, if you, you know, and again, these are all hypothetical, but I'm just wondering, where the liability consideration for the city ends? And you're saying it doesn't end until it gets on the field?
Right, right.
Okay, so.
So the, I mean, if, if Stewart's, there, there's, uh, uh, regulations that they have to abide by when they put it on the farm field to stay away from, uh, waterways and to, uh, plow it into the ground.
Okay, so.
Uh, right away.
It's knifed in, is what you said?
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
Okay. No surface spreading?
Correct.
Okay.
And then in the transport, though, they're responsible during transport.
Their responsibility, yes.
So if they had an accident while transporting, it would be on their insurance and their liability.
So what's our liability once it gets on the farm field?
It's just that we, because there's, uh, radium in the biosolids because of the, the water plant.
Right.
The City of Geneva still has a responsibility for making sure that that, that they.
Which, which is in legal limits, right?
Right.
So is, are, is the material assayed, or do we retain samples of it?
Yes, yes.
For legal reasons?
Yes.
Okay.
All of that is documented, yes.
Okay, well, that's all I had.